Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the January 5th, 2021 Happy New Year Meeting. We're into 2021 and glad to be there. At this time, I'd like to ask everybody to please stand and we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Okay, Mayor Racy.
Here.
Mayor Proton Porter.
Here.
Councilman Miller.
Present.
Councilman Dowd.
Here.
Councilwoman Skiff.
Here.
Councilman Wagner.
Here.
Councilman Brock. You're muted.
Here.
Thank you. War is present. The first item is for a moment of silence for Wayne County Sheriff Benny Napoleon, retired business owner Phil Kaplan of Northside Hardware, City of Wayne Election Inspector James Hotchkins, Dearborn Heights Mayor Daniel Paletko, and for all of those who have lost their lives due to COVID-19.
Thank you. We're gonna wait a second. It looks like we lost Councilman Porter or Mayor Proton. Okay, Mayor Proton will be back in just a minute. His computer, for some reason, reset itself. And he said to go ahead, so why don't we go ahead and do the approving of the agenda in the council minutes? And then if he's not back on, we'll wait as at number three.
Move to approve the exception.
Second, Wagner.
Any questions?
Yeah, Mayor, if I just may point out, it's dated January 5th, 2020 at the top on the agenda.
Oops.
She did it.
The meeting number is correct, but the date's wrong.
Yep.
Uh, yep. Well, I was looking, Bill, I thought for sure you were gonna find that.
And I looked at that too and totally looked over that, obviously.
Takes a little while.
Anything else?
I'm, I missed the motion and the support. Was it Councilman Miller?
Yes.
And Wagner?
Yes.
Okay, alright. We ready for roll call?
Yes, please.
Um, Councilman Miller?
Here.
That's a yes?
Present.
Um.
No, it's a yes or, it's a yes or no answer, not present or here.
Uh, it's roll call for the approval of the agenda.
Yes.
Councilwoman Skiff?
Yes.
Councilman Wagner?
Yes.
Councilman Dowd?
Yes.
Councilman Brock?
Yes.
Mayor Racy?
Yes.
Motion carries. The next item on the agendas for the city council minutes, regular meeting of December 15th, 2020.
Move to approve, Wagner. Port out.
Questions? Roll call, please.
Councilman Miller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Skiff?
Yes.
Councilman Wagner?
Yes.
Councilman Dowd?
Yes.
Councilman Brock?
Yes.
Mayor Racy?
Yes.
Motion carries. So... Did you want to wait a few more minutes or wanna go ahead with the public questions regarding items on the agenda?
Yeah, he's not back yet, is he?
No.
Yeah, let's, let's go ahead with that and then, then we'll see where we're at.
Um, Mayor Racy?
Yes.
Sorry. Um, there's one item before that. We just have to approve the minutes from the last council meeting. Is that correct or, I'm sorry, didn't?
We just did that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry, that was A. Sorry.
They were from 2020, though.
Okay.
They were.
So, yeah, let's go ahead with the public questions on the agenda. Do we have anybody this evening that would like to speak on any item on the agenda? Only items on the current agenda for tonight. If so, please raise your hand. And that would be star nine if you're on your cellphone, or you can do it in lower, you can raise your hand, it's, the button is at the bottom of the attendee area. So is there anybody that would like to speak this evening? Anybody for items not, that are on the agenda? Okay. We'll move the agenda and we're gonna hold for a second and I'll call and see where he's at. So we'll be holding for a minute. We're on item three, appointments to boards and commissions and committees.
Hello. I'm here.
Okay. Trying to see if we can see you or not.
Yeah, I'm on the phone right now.
Okay. We're getting an echo off of your thing. Do you have it? You gotta, you're gonna have to lower your volume or something, I think.
How's that?
I'm not sure. Is it?
I was.
Yeah, that's better.
I was on, I was trying to get on it. It came up on a computer, the screen come up on a computer, but I was still not on it, you know, on the computer or so, and I was talking over the phone and that don't work.
Okay.
Okay.
No problem.
Sorry about that.
No problem. You've, you've spent your three minutes for the next three meetings. You're good.
Okay, that's fine. I never have anything important to say anyway.
Okay, let's go ahead. Let's move the agenda, please.
Okay, so, um, the next item was number three, appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. Three A, approval of appointment of David Bork to the Nankin Transit Commission for a two-year term to expire January 2023.
Move to approve.
Support.
Questions? Roll call, please.
Mayor Proton Porter?
Uh, yes.
Councilman Miller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Skiff?
Yes.
Councilman Wagner?
Yes.
Councilman Dowd?
Yes.
Councilman Brock? Muted? You're muted. You're muted. There we go.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Racy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And I just want to let everybody know, I think Mr. Bork is gonna be a great addition. He used to work for STEP in, when they were in Wayne, and they had moved to Westland into the old Tinkham Building. And actually, that organization, she does the cleaning for the city. But, but he's now retired and has always wanted to participate in, in some city things once he retired and now he has that opportunity, so. Welcome aboard, David. I know he's watching tonight. I can see him on the attendee area. Congratulations. Okay, let's go ahead and move the agenda.
Okay, item three B, approval of reappointment of Kevin Dowd to the Nankin Transit Commission for a two-year term to expire January 2023.
Move to approve, Wagner.
Support. Support, Porter.
Roll call, please.
Um, Mayor Proton Porter?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Skiff?
Yes.
Councilman Wagner?
Yes.
Councilman Dowd?
Uh, should I vote on myself?
Can.
Whatever you want to do.
Oh, yes.
Councilman Brock?
Yes.
Mayor Racy?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item three C is approval of reappointment of Susan Lee to the Wayne Housing Commission for a five-year term to expire February 2026.
Move to approve. Port out.
Questions? Roll call, please.
Mayor Proton Porter?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Skiff?
Yes.
Councilman Wagner?
Yes.
Councilman Dowd?
Yes.
Councilman Brock?
Yes.
Mayor Racy?
Yes.
Carries. Item number four, general items, four A, consideration of a study session in late January or February to discuss budgetary matters.
Motion approve, Porter.
Second, Wagner.
City manager?
Yes, through the chair. Good evening. Happy New Year to everyone. The, the reason that I wanted to, to propose this is because obviously we just passed, or actually, we're, we're going through the judgment levy right now, but I think it's a good idea for us to have a refresher in January on a number of things, or whenever we have the study session. What I have garnered, and, and please don't take offense to this, because it is not anything to, to be insulting or to take insulting, but, or to take as an insult uh, at all. Budgets are a very complicated, complex thing. And we have, you know, department heads who have been here for a very long time, myself, who have worked with budgets for a very long time. And budgets can be a little bit difficult to understand. The biggest thing that I want is to have each council member understand the budgets that they are reading and understand how to read these budgets and to help us to clarify whether or not these budgets are making sense to you, because you have to make very key decisions, critical decisions, based on the information that we provide. If you're looking at these budgets and not understanding them, then that is a problem to me, because I would never want you to vote or to not understand what the administration is presenting to you ever. It is important that you have this information and that you, you, you do, your questions are answered. And again, it's not, it, it really is not anything to, to, you know, it should not be taken as insult. It should actually, we want to improve our communication with you at all times. Councils change, people change, people understand things differently. And so we want to make every effort to, to do that. So saying this, um, I would like to actually, if council could schedule a couple of study sessions, because I don't think that we're gonna get everything done in one study session. And I'd like to prepare and have everybody have an ability to put on their calendars these sessions, so that you can plan around vacations or time off or family time, whatever may be. Uh, that also goes for the department heads. And so what I'd like to do is focus the first study session on the budget. Looking at the budget together, understanding the budget, answering your questions on something that may not make sense. Um, and, and basically just trying to take a look at where we're going. There is never a, a crystal ball for us to give to you, and there's not a crystal ball that we can utilize to tell you exactly what number we're gonna be at, at this time or this date. We don't know any of that. And we're not going to make guesses on that, because guesses are not a safe thing to do, especially when we are in the situation that we are in, asking the public or what we are asking them for now, and yourselves as the public. Um, what I would like to do is just have a very in-depth conversation about the budget with Brian and Katie and the finance team and, and try to just set the ground to try, I, I guess, to set some kind of pace for us to start to have a discussion on where we're gonna go moving forward. This is gonna be a full team effort. It's gonna continue to be a full team effort. And we need everybody to be under, you know, understanding what it is you're looking at and what it is that's coming up. No blindsiding, right? Let's just have frank conversations. It's, we need to do that and keep doing that. So what I'm recommending is maybe at the end of January, to schedule a first session and maybe for a few hours, and, and specifically just focus on the budget. I would like to schedule a second session, not only because we will probably have questions that we will need to answer to you, that we want to keep this a public focus, but also there's gonna be other items that I would like to add to this as well. I think we need to have a frank discussion about the fire department operations, where they're going, some of the challenges they've had, the vehicle issues that they're experiencing, you know. We need to have discussions on all of that. The police department, staffing, where we're at. I know that there's been conversation about, you know, what can the police department do with 26 officers if the chief is to reach that point? What can they feasibly do? What services can they provide? There's also, their aging fleet as well. I mean, we have, our buildings in both of those departments are having issues and experiencing issues and coming of age as well. Um, I don't think that we should ignore the Department of Public Works. We, we are doing a good job of, of providing equipment where we can. But I do think it's a good overview for Ed to have an opportunity to talk to you about where the equipment is at and start preparing you for some of the future expenses that are coming up. Um, court, I think that that, and I think the judge will probably not be surprised. The court should always be something that we're discussing as well, because right now, as I stated, the court is underfunded, um, and we don't have an ability to fund them at the capacity that they feel they can effectively run that court. So I think that needs to be discussed as well. Um, revenue options across the board, charter changes. Uh, some of you are new to this, but back in 2019, I think Councilman Brock, maybe you are the only council member that was not on, but I, if you recall, uh, the administration did provide pages of information about the charter that are affecting the operations and our ability to move forward. They're so outdated. I mean, there is some stuff in there that is, is just, it has to be removed. It is not with the times at all. But I think we had decided that it was just expensive. We didn't want to look at a charter commission because of the, the cost, uh, the attorney fees, putting it on the ballot, but I think it is a serious conversation that we have to have at some point and not push aside. And then I want Elise to talk about the personnel office. I think it's a good idea for her to talk about all the changes that she's made, all of the, um, the money that she's retrieved that, that was actually spent, uh, but brought back. People were overpaid, people were underpaid. I think we need to have a very frank conversation about all the work that has been done in that office to clean up, you know, a lot of the, the, you know, changes and, and, and moving with, with where we're at. There were a lot of things that she's had to do to put that office in a position where somebody could go in there and not have to chase around information like she had to do for the last three years. Um, that's not blaming anybody. It's just how you, we're just trying to be better at how we are, are leaving these offices, how we are making sure that if one of us is not here, something could happen. There is a, a document in front of you that you know where everything is at. You know the changes that have been made. We don't want to leave anybody in a lurch, right? I apologize for going on, but a lot of these items are, are just gonna be so, so important. And I think if we can at least start with two study sessions for two to two and a half hours each, that'll get us on track. And then I think that maybe in February, we can reassess if we need another one, but the most critical right now, I feel, is the budget and all the other areas that are going to have some capital need improvements coming up. Thank you.
So Lisa, how fast are you thinking that you want to do this? In the next couple of weeks, at the end of the month?
Um, I think that if, if we can feasibly, I would say by the end of January, and the reason I say that is because Katie and Brian are going to be presenting the audit on the, at the January 19th meeting. So I'd like, as Councilman Miller had emailed, he wanted to talk about the audit as well. So I think that that's going to be important to put that piece in place first. I had those questions answered, because it's going to probably be part of the, this discussion as well, Mr. Mayor. So I'm thinking probably I would look at the following week, the week of the 25th, at the, at the very, at the earliest, and then maybe going into the second week of February, the, you know, I, I think we should keep them pretty much back to back, so the discussion doesn't run stale.
That's. Yes.
Uh, yeah, can I just propose we keep them on Tuesdays, because my work schedule's really booking out, so I could do both, you know, Tuesday, January 26th and Tuesday, February 9th, if you wanted.
Can, can you do, um, six o'clock? Is that a problem?
That is not a problem.
So let me see what, so we've got it. Well, I guess it doesn't matter. We're not gonna have it. We have a planning commission meeting on the 9th, but if we're virtual, it's not gonna really matter. Just Lori will be, have to be at, at the planning commission, so we can deal with that. Well.
I don't want to really go too far into February for those two meetings, Mayor, if we can feasibly handle that.
Right, but is there, is there, I'm trying to remember, and I don't know that she's on the call tonight, is there something going on with the, at that February meeting with the master plan?
That's possible. No, actually, I think that, that.
That'll be done in June.
Doing that this month.
Yeah, I just didn't know.
I believe you're putting that on the 19th for your consideration at the council meeting, if I'm not mistaken. So I think that we're okay.
Okay.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Uh, my only suggestion is that we try to keep after the presentations, so the information's very fresh in our minds uh, and that we can, you know, shortly after that, that presentation, a few days after, or, you know, don't keep it too long, because I don't want that information to slip away. I want it to be very relevant for us in these discussions.
Mayor Racy, through the chair?
Yes.
Yes, I, I am here. Thank you for unmuting me, Jeff. At least the city manager is absolutely correct.
Okay.
Uh, by February, as long as everything goes good at next Tuesday night's planning commission meeting, and then your next council meeting, uh, that master plan will be adopted at your next meeting.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that there was nothing extra that I wasn't aware of.
There is not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so, do we need to do a motion for the 26th? And what was it then, Phil, did you say the?
February 9th.
February 9th at six o'clock. Do you want to make that motion, Phil?
Uh, sure. Do you want me to amend my motion or make a motion within a mid-motion?
Well, we need, we need to amend that with the time, I guess.
Yes.
Okay, so I'll amend my motion to, I move to have two study sessions. Um, the first on Tuesday, January 26th at six o'clock, and the second. Um, the first on Tuesday, January 26th at six o'clock, and the second on February 9th at six o'clock.
Support.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Hey, Mayor Proton Porter.
Yes.
Councilman Miller.
Yes.
Councilwoman Skiff.
Yes.
Councilman Wagner.
Yes.
Councilman Dowd. Is that a guess, Councilman Dowd?
Yes. You can't hear me?
I didn't, no, I didn't hear you. Um, Councilman Brock?
Yes.
Mayor Racy?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Um, 4B is approval of Michigan Department of Transportation resolution designating the names and positions of those persons authorized to sign permits for work performed within the state trunk line right-of-way.
Move to approve.
Uh, Mr. Queen?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
This is just our, um, annual permit that we come to for at the beginning of the year. It's so that we can, uh, perform any type of, um, restoration work, water main breaks, anything that may happen on the right-of-ways on the Michigan Avenue, on, on the MDOT roadway. Uh, so that's all this is, is a resolution.
Okay. Any other questions from council? Roll call, please.
Mayor Proton Porter.
Yes.
Councilman Miller.
Yes.
Councilwoman Skiff.
Yes.
Councilman Wagner.
Yes.
Councilman Dowd.
Yes.
Councilman Brock.
Yes.
Mayor Racy.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mayor, members of council.
You're welcome.
Item number five is administration reports.
City manager?
Yes, through the chair. Thank you. Um, Mayor, before, before we move forward, I just had a question from one of the staff that, um, or the city attorney, if I may. Um, Mr. Bosnick, if we, are we, can the city have two meetings running at the same time? A planning meeting and a council meeting?
Uh, no, because the public should be afforded the opportunity to go to each of their meetings.
I didn't realize that. So that would impact the planning commission meeting, um, because we would have this at the same time as the planning commission meeting on the 9th. Um, I don't know if Ms. Goen is having a planning commission meeting on the 9th. If she's still on.
Is there, it looks like?
I, I am here through the chair. Um, absolutely, we would have a planning commission meeting if there's something brought forward. Um, I am willing to perhaps amend the February date.
That would be helpful.
Um, it would probably be easier for me to do that maybe than the council, I'm thinking. I, I, I guess, uh, I guess we can have further conversation. Why don't the plan, why don't you just have the council go ahead and leave their meeting as is? And then we can, we can discuss it tomorrow.
If we can determine at the next meeting.
Yeah, if we can maybe move the, the date, I mean.
Maybe you can move it to Monday.
Exactly.
Thank you. I, I apologize. I know that's a little, uh, different than normal practice here, but it was a great question. So, uh, Ms. Goen, thank you for bringing that to my attention, and please thank the council member that brought that to your attention from the other community. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was, that was a good call. Mike, thank you kindly. Okay, um, just a couple of things this evening. Um, city operations, uh, I, I am happy to say that, uh, when a lot of the communities had, had closed their, um, city halls and their city operations, Wayne remained open. You have a very dedicated group of, uh, staff who, uh, no pushback, uh, they, um, are happy to be at work. Um, and so I just want to thank the public for being so cooperative, and, uh, please continue to adhere to social distancing protocols in city hall. We have removed, um, all of the dividers because it was really, uh, thank you to the city clerk, it was really kind of clogging up the hallway. Um, it was a good idea in the beginning, but now we just have the markers on the floor. So we just ask that anyone entering in city hall, please use those markers to wait in line so that we can continue to keep social distancing, and we appreciate everybody continuing to wear their masks or facial covering in city hall. Uh, I have some good news. As you recall, I, for months, spent time writing federal emergency management agency reimbursement grants for the personal protection equipment that we had. That was one of the most complicated, um, portals I have ever dealt with in my life. And in fact, it was so complicated that FEMA couldn't tell us how to, um, actually, uh, make Wayne eligible or other communities eligible for this reimbursement, and it's something that I had to figure out on my own, um, and helped other communities figure out how to get themselves into the portal because it was a new portal. It was a portal that they had switched over from, uh, emergencies across the country that are like, uh, you know, for flooding or things like that, and they tried to makeshift it a little too quickly and, and did not catch all the glitches. So after about 10 days of trying to figure out how to get Wayne registered into the system, uh, we were finally able to get three grant opportunities in, and I will tell you, it was a lot of work. I'd be happy to share with you just how much work each of these, uh, items were. It wasn't a matter of just writing up why you needed it. It was a matter of every single item that we purchased, how much the quantity, how much per unit, how much the total cost was, and you had to, uh, also provide all the receipts to go along with that as well. And you had to have your numbers sharp and on track. I think I filled out probably for the city of Wayne in all three grounds, at least, uh, rounds, 75 to 80 forms with all these little numbers. So it was well worth it because we need to fight for pennies, right? So our first, um, item finally was paid out. Uh, I submitted that in April. It was, we submitted for $37,000 in PPE requests, uh, for reimbursement, and they required, uh, 20% off the top. So we ended up getting, uh, $27,869 of that $37,000 reimbursed. That would have been money that would have just run right out the door and we would not have gotten. So that is another $27,000 that went back into the general fund. Uh, so that was actually, uh, paid out to the city of Wayne yesterday. Uh, so that's good. We still have two more rounds going, one for $99,000 and another one for $16,000. So we're just waiting for that money to come through. Um, the other item is that, um, uh, there was one more thing, I apologize. Oh, that was the last one. Um, there was a comment on the agenda at the last meeting from, uh, Mr. Stoner, um, and I did respond to Mr. Stoner via email, um, prior to the meeting. That's why he had indicated in the city clerk's email, I appreciate it, but you, you know, not all his questions were, were answered. Um, I don't want to, I, I'd be happy to share with the entire council my communications with Mr. Stoner if you'd like them, but the one thing that I will say is that the, the, I think what is being looked for is that there are citizens that don't feel that they have any responsibility towards these pensions. The pensions are the obligation of the taxpayers. And it doesn't matter what city you go to, wherever you go, you will be obligated to pay your taxes, which will also impact paying for the pensions. So I really don't have another answer for that. I know this is very difficult on everyone, but if, I, I, I'm not going to be able to answer Mr. Stoner's question to his satisfaction because there is no answer that includes that there is no responsibility on behalf of the citizens for these pensions because they're absolutely 100% is. So, um, I'd be happy to share those emails with the entire council if you, if you would like them, but, um, I would, uh, I did, I did answer his questions even prior to the council meeting, so. And I'm always happy to answer questions. Uh, I did want to let the council know that I emailed you this evening. I know that one of the things that was brought to our attention by, uh, members of the public was that they want to be sure that these judgment levy number, that, that the money is going to MERS. Uh, the city has collected, um, they collected about $287,000 between the first and the 15th of December, uh, for the judgment levy. That money has been paid to MERS already. And then between the 16th and the 31st of December, uh, the city collected a little over 1.6 million. That has been paid to MERS today as well. So each time, every 15 days, the, uh, Finance Director Katie Sample is taking those judgment levy payments that are coming in, that money is coming in, and they are going directly to MERS to make that payment. So the city has paid about one point, a little, about 1.9 million into the system already in those payments. So I think that's good information. Uh, I will keep the council posted on these payments, uh, monthly, and, uh, it's about every 15 days. So I'll either do it in my report or publicly, but I think it's good for the public to know that we are making sure that these, all of that, all of those dollars are going towards the judgment levy. Um, Mr. Bosnick, did you have anything that you wanted to add this evening?
Uh, nothing this evening, thank you.
Okay, uh, city clerk?
I do, thank you, Lisa. I just wanted to add in that, um, there was an opportunity from the state, um, to get 50% reimbursement from the high-speed scanner that the city bought, and we did receive that. It was $13,813. So that's back into the general fund as well. So that's good.
You know, you did a great job on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome, and thank you. We're always, we're always trying to find money wherever we can. The last thing I just wanted to say is that we hope to see the Atwood Play Structure Project move forward in 2021. Uh, 2020 was a bit challenging, as we know. We don't even want to talk about that anymore. Um, and we hope to see that, uh, the mill trail, uh, the CDBG funding that we received for the upgrades to mill trail, we hope to see that coming around in 2021 as well. Um, and if you haven't noticed, there has been some, the wall over in Goudy Park, thank you to the DDA and help the DPW, um, that wall that has had rebar sticking out and has been very unsafe is now down, if you've been by city hall. They brought it down as far as they could to the ground, and there is a plan to cover it, put grass, and it'll be a grassy hill now. But I was very concerned, I'm sure as you were, about the rebar that kept popping out, about all of the, um, uh, loose cement that kept getting tossed around, and enough was enough. We had to do something. So I want to thank the Downtown Development Authority because they made the investment, uh, to, uh, help get the company here to, to take down that wall, and now we don't have that safety issue anymore. Um, there is a orange fence around it for the time being, but, um, that, that will be completed, uh, before this, this spring and summer so that people can use that area. Mayor, council, thank you. Happy New Year. That'll conclude my report this evening.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What comments for matters not on the agenda pursuant to the Michigan Open Meetings Act and the enacted procedures and rules of city council? Now is time, now is the time for public comment. Any questions will not be answered this evening, but the appropriate person will make their best effort to respond by the next council meeting or as soon as possible, provided you stay or read your contact information with the city clerk. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Mayor, I did receive a email from someone. If I could go ahead and read that email this time?
Okay.
Um, this is from Steve Habob with Collision Pros. Um, he says, "I was shocked, to say the least, at tax, at the tax increase when reviewing my tax bill earlier today. Upon further review, I saw that the increase was due to $1,400 for a pension charge. Considering the times and hardships we are currently facing, I am appalled that we would get any raise in bills we owe to the city. Anything, we should be given a break. I am struggling to pay my bills and to keep my doors open, and any amount extra that is owed, I refuse to be responsible for. This city should instead be helping its business owners to stay open instead of adding additional burdens on their shoulders, because without us, how would this city continue to flourish? I keep my building clean, I keep my landscape up, I keep my customers happy, and instead of being considerate of our situations during this rough time, you choose to take advantage instead. Once again, this extra charge is not at all within my means, and I want it gone."
Thank you. Um, do we have anybody in the attendee area that would like to speak, uh, this evening? Looks like I have one on a Galaxy J7 refined. We need to go ahead and unmute, oh, the Galaxy J7.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I'm not happy with this, uh.
I need, I need your name, name first and.
Hey, my name is Earl Horner.
Okay.
And I live at 3582 Swanson Street, Wayne, Michigan.
Okay.
And, uh, I've had a lot happen this last year, too, and I can relate to the other person that was, you guys were talking about. I have got cancer in the last year, had to have surgery for lung cancer, and, um, it was 2018, my house burnt, and, uh, they had to redo my house and stuff, and I had purchased the land next door, and I went from $300 to $700 for winter taxes for somebody else's pension. I think it's ridiculous when I'm on social security disability. Well, probably not. I'm on social security now, and I, I got cancer that during this pandemic, when my stepdad died too, and the guys, if mutual friends have died from, uh, this COVID, and you guys are talking about all kinds of money for personal equipment and stuff that you guys raised, and you're going to raise our taxes like this? There's some, there should be some way somebody's helping people, you know, that are disabled. I mean, I received $16 a month for food stamps, but yet you guys are going to charge us for your pension. That's all I have to say. I think it's ridiculous.
Thank you. Okay. Stan Shelton?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, wow. Yes, Stan Shelton, Wayne resident, uh, 25 years. Just wanted to say, um, Happy New Years to, uh, you, Mr. Mayor, and city council. But I, I just want to introduce a new, um, person that's working for the chamber, Executive Director, Zach Erskine, uh, who's, uh, really already on board, and, uh, we're excited to have Zach because he's a digital marketer. So we're going to be able to offer packages to our members that will include digital marketing and also print marketing. And it's going to be a slow, probably going to start off really slow, uh, so, but Zach, I was going to, is it possible for him to say anything? No?
Yeah, we could add him.
Hey, everyone, Zach here. Good talking to you, Mr. Mayor, uh, council people. So yeah, one of the things that I'm being hired on to do is offer more benefits to the members of the Chamber of Commerce. One of the things that we're looking at, other than digital and paper marketing, is , uh, talk to Blue Cross Blue Shield, uh, since we have a large underwriting group, uh, extending possibly, uh, more affordable health insurance for our members. And our goal is, you know, in a year or two, to have enough in the bank to start doing community events, uh, to get back to the community. Hopefully, you know, no one knows what's going on with COVID, if we're going to shut down again, if we're going to stay open. Uh, one of the things that we want to do, um, moving forward, you know, in spring, summer, when everything gets worked out, is, you know, maybe have an event for, uh, the youth of Wayne. I've talked to, uh, the Baptist Church, uh, just down the street from the Chamber of Commerce, and there's definitely a large focus on helping the youth in, uh, the city. So we would like to maybe have a youth event, um, and then maybe in 2022, uh, move forward and start doing cultural events. I really want to grow the chamber, and I think there's a lot of things that we can offer our members, uh, give more benefit to our members as well as help other small business, businesses in Wayne, lean on each other, offer their services, and, uh, grow the economy of the city. So, uh, that's about it.
Okay, welcome aboard to the city.
Thank you.
Hey, anybody else tonight that has, uh, something they'd like to speak on that was not on the agenda? Please raise your hand, or star nine if you're on your cell phone or landline. Anyone else would like to speak this evening? Uh, seeing none, please move the agenda.
Okay, um, comments from members of city council.
Okay. Okay, Councilwoman Skeff.
Do you know I went first last time, right?
Well, you're first at my, at my screen.
Just kidding, it's okay. I don't have much to say tonight anyway. I just hope everybody had a wonderful New Year. Happy New Year again. I just wanted to say tonight, I wanted to thank Susan for her reappointment. Susan Lee on the Housing Commission, five years is a pretty long commitment. So thank you very much for volunteering to do that again. And we appreciate, we appreciate you. I appreciate you. Also, wanted to congratulate David Bork on his new appointment to our Transit Commission. And also wanted to also thank my fellow council member Kevin Dowd for once again stepping up to be on the Transit Commission as well. Yes, that would be.
Okay.
And that's really it. Thank you very much and we'll see you in two weeks.
Okay. Let's see. Councilman Miller?
Thank you, Mayor Racy. We've been through a lot last year. It's really hard to say Happy New Years. But what I do want to say is I wish everyone the best of a New Year. And last week, this country, every 32 seconds, someone died from COVID-19. 32 seconds. We have a lot of challenging days ahead of us. I'm asking everybody to continue to protect themselves. Get informed about the vaccine that's coming our way. I want us to all really seriously think about us working together as a community to get through this. We will get through this, but we have to work together to do it. And last year is in the past. We have this year in front of us. And I think that's important for all of us to look ahead, look forward, be positive, at the same time being realistic. So I wish everyone the best in this coming New Year. With that, I will pass.
Councilman Wagner?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, let's see, find this here, okay. "I got excited about this meeting when I saw that there were no agenda items that involved spending money. I said this last meeting, and I'll say it again, I believe we should consider ourselves under an emergency situation when it comes to our finances. City is hurting, residents are hurting, the businesses are hurting. We need to run as tight of a budget as possible until this budget levy is paid off. Unfortunately, that may even include sacrificing some services. Now, I did want to say this. If a department head brings an expense to council and council votes it down, that department head should not feel bad. It is the department's head's job to tell city council what they need, what equipment they need in order to provide their specific services to the city. Another angle is when department heads do bring expenditure items to the meetings, people should not blame them. They are only doing their jobs. It is our job on council to figure out what services absolutely must be kept and what services the people are willing to sacrifice in order to pay down the judgment levy." That'll pass.
Okay, Councilman Brock? You there?
I'm right here.
Okay. You're on.
All right. I want to just let everyone know about Healthy Wayne, which was formed through the city of Wayne and Beaumont Health and Wayne Westland Community Schools a while ago to promote health initiatives through awareness campaigns and lifestyle activities and events. And the vision is to have city of Wayne be and remain a vibrant community supporting healthy lifestyles. The mission is to have a community working together to promote and encourage health and wellness by connecting people, ideas, and resources for everybody that lives here, works here, and visits. And if you want to learn more about Healthy Wayne, all you need to do is go to Facebook, look up Healthy Wayne. There's a monthly meeting also that you can participate in if you'd like to. One other thing I would like to bring attention to is the new Michigan Learning Channel. So this is a state-sponsored item that just started on Monday. And the Michigan Learning Channel is a statewide public television partnership offering instructional content to support education of students and to provide alternative resources for families and teachers. To learn more about that, all you need to do is go to the internet and look up michiganlearning.org. That's michiganlearning.org. So tonight I was talking about Healthy Wayne, which you can get to through Facebook, and michiganlearning.org, which you can get through any internet interface. Thank you so much and Happy New Year.
Thank you. Councilman Dowd?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have much, but I do want to thank Councilman Wagner for points that I think everybody deeply feels. And I know that we are, we're tightening our belt and this budgetary session is going to be, I'm sure it's going to be intense and it's going to be uncomfortable at times, but we're going to ask more questions going into this first quarter than, or so than ever. Assumptions cannot be our method of making decisions. I want to thank our volunteers that have stepped up in our boards and commissions. Looking forward to working and meeting and getting to know David Bork on the Nankin Transit Commission. And I know Susan Lee from my time on the Housing Commission. And the Housing Commission's in good hands and I want to thank her for another five years of service. And with that, I'll pass.
Hey, thank you. Mayor Protop. And I just want to say, no disrespect, you were looking great this evening.
Yep. You can't tell my hair is not combed?
Before, before your camera went out, we were talking about how, how, how well you are looking and very grateful that you're, it looks like you're doing a lot better.
Yeah, thank you. I am doing pretty well. I have some problems, but we'll work through them. All I have this evening is I, I, I think it's a Happy New Year. We're in 2021. I want it to be a positive New Year and that's going to make it happy. So that's all I have to say. Just Happy New Year, everybody. And thank you for the council, the administration, to all the staff, everybody in the city for working as hard as you do. And, and I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. Just a couple of things tonight. I too want to wish everybody a Happy New Year. I think it's definitely, it's amazing all the things that got done in 2020 with everything that, with all the bad things that have been happening. I think our staff has done a tremendous job again in working with, with the tight budget. I do want to just say, in my opinion, we've been working on an emergency situation for a long time. And nothing's really changed in that standpoint to me. I think that's what we've been doing. I think we'll continue to do that. And, and I think we just got to remember, we all know, we all knew this was coming from our conversations for the last year as we've been looking at things. We looked at, this is when we even did the, the budget. We passed the budget that didn't have, that did not have us having a millage where past councils would have passed and had, had a millage listed or something else. And this wasn't a millage, this was a judgment levy. And we knew that, we, we, we were honest with the public and said that the money wasn't there. I mean, and, and thank you to the council that chose to, to pass that that way. I think I talked about that before. That's something that's not the way, you know, it's not a popular way to do things. But it's the honest way to do things and I'm very proud of our council for, for coming forward and being honest with the public. And I think we're doing, you know, a great job with what we have to work with. We'll continue to have to make tough decisions, but we have to remember we still have to run the city. Everything can't just shut down and not happen. I mean, we're going to have to look at these things critically, but we still got to make and move the city forward. Just stopping everything will put us back where we were. And so we got to continue to make tough decisions. But I think we also want to look at how we, how we move the city forward. And I think, I think we're doing a really, really great job. And I think it starts with having a great staff. And from our city manager down, we're very blessed to have the staff that we have. And, and I'm just, just very impressed with the professionalism and the ability to continue to work under the conditions that they have. They're doing a fine job and our citizens should be very proud of that. We have, I, I hold up our staff against anybody in the state. I think, I think we have a tremendous staff and department heads. I also wanted to talk about real quick. I wanted to, I don't know if people know that the First United Methodist Church disbanded at the end of this last year, which was really sad. They've been around this community forever. One of the, one of the original churches in our community and, which is very sad. Their numbers had dwindled down and they had to make tough decisions. And they decided to disband through their, their denomination. But through that, I think what's really exciting to me is that there was a church that we've been working with in our community that's been participating in things that has been renting from that facility. And they are in the process of purchasing that, that church building. And that church is actually going to be stronger than it's been in years. And we'll continue to do things to try to build our community. So that'll happen later this month. They've already had the purchase agreement. They've been working on all the different details that they have to do. I think that their title came through today. And it just, I think it's another week and they'll have their everything taken care of with the bank. But that's a, that's, that's a big, that's, that's tremendous. Because that could have been another, you know, a big vacant building in the middle of the downtown that, that could have just sat there for a long, long time if you don't get, get the right people in there. So I, I want to, Pastor Seth and his church, I'm just really excited that they're able to continue making an investment to stay in our community and want to build their congregation, our building. We've had in this last year, well, they've been here two years with that. And then with merged church adding into our community, I think that those, you know, that's some tremendous support from the religious community that we haven't had. And both, both churches seem to be very healthy and doing some really positive things for, for people. So with that, Happy New Year and looking forward to our, our budget sessions and, and working through those. I think that those are, we used to do something like this a number of years ago. And I think, you know, it's great that we're starting it early, having everybody come and talking to us and really getting everybody on board. I mean, we're starting this two, three months earlier than normal. And we're, we're on top of things. And I really appreciate the administration pushing this forward for us and working to make this better. With that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn tonight.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Have a great night, everybody.